Everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is October 5, 2021. It's 9:30 a.m., and this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask the clerk if she could call the roll and establish quorum.
Good morning. Supervisors Desmond, Kennedy, Natoli, Serna, Frost, and you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 8th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you, and I would ask my fine colleague Supervisor Desmond if you would please lead us in the pledge.
.................................
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. This morning, I don't have a whole lot of opening comments, so I'm going to move right in to our meeting announcement and we can get down to work quickly. Let's see. "The Board of Supervisors encourages the public participation during the meeting in person and telephonically or in writing in compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. This meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county requires a face mask or face shield while inside the county's administration building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in order of in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face mask or shield is required, and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers or Hearing Rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside the chambers, and overflow seating is available in Hearing Rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait for your turn to make a public comment. Please complete the speaker request form and give it to the clerk's staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item on the topic that is not on the posted agenda. When I open the public comments, I'll call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium, inside the chambers, and wait for your turn to make a comment. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in the queue, or make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda, item queue, will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk's staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures."
Okay, so for your consent matters, items 1 through 40, I do have a title correction for item 3. It should be Adoption of the 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting Calendar, and we'll get that corrected on the action summary. For item 5, you're introducing an ordinance repealing Chapter 2.2, Title 2 of the Sacramento County Code relating to supervisory districts effective no later than December 7, 2021, or sooner upon adoption by the Board of Supervisors of new supervisory district boundaries, waiving full reading and continuing to October 19 for adoption. Item 15, you're also introducing an ordinance amending Chapters 2.9 and 2.165, Title 2 of the Sacramento County Code, relating to the sanitation districts agency. You're waiving reading on this and continuing to October 19 for adoption. You're also going to authorize the Department of Personnel Services to process a salary resolution amendment. And that concludes my notes from the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have some board members that are in the queue to speak. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to pull item 29, have that read into the record.
Yes, just give me one second. Item 29 is the Authorization to Execute an Agreement with Permitium LLC for Online Concealed Weapon Permit Application and Processing Services for the period of November 1 through October 31, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe there's somebody from the Sheriff's Department here today? Thank you. How are you? Thank you for coming.
Of course.
So, one question I have is recently, or fairly recently, AB 1297 changed the rules on how we charge for concealed weapons permits. And before, there was a $100 limit the state placed on us, and therefore, we were subsidizing them, and they weren't full cost recovery, and now it requires them actually to reasonably cover the costs of the process. Are we doing that? Have we increased? Have we changed the way we are charging for these?
So, we are in the process of doing that. We just completed a time study, and then we're working with our fiscal unit to try to get our fees up to the point where we will be cost neutral.
Great, thank you. Thank you, that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, Madam Clerk, for the record, I will be voting no on number 29.
29, thank you. Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you Madam Chair. I wanted to call out a couple of items. I wanted to have some discussion on item 3, if we could, of the calendar, and then also item 8 and item 19. We leave them on consent calendar, but just wanted to make notes, so maybe we can call item 3 first.
Okay, item 3 is the Adoption of the 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting Calendar.
Yes, just wanted to note here and raise for our consideration this morning that in the June timeframe for next year, we have our budget hearings as we would normally do, as we've done for the last several years, in the second week in June, and I was going to offer the suggestion that when we start those budget hearings, that we might want to consider a night session for the, certainly in light of some of the feedback we've had from folks, for that first day of hearings, which will begin June the 8th, and I know we've got, on the current calendar, it shows 9:30 a.m. start, and then there's, I guess, a regional sand being that day, although I'm not sure about that. And then again, to be determined, 2:00 p.m., Board of Supervisors, but it might be that we want to start at 2:00 that day, since we have a board meeting the previous day, and then schedule, because typically, when we have a lot of public input, run into the evenings anyway, so it might be, we want to hold our calendars for that, so I don't know if there's any comment from county executive on that, but I did talk about that, at least in my briefing, so.
I don't have any problem with it.
We can certainly do that if that's...
Okay, and if we actually do have regional sand that day, which shows, then we could, you know, do the regional sand, do a 2 o'clock start, and then allow for a 6 o'clock session for our budget items, so I would offer that as a suggestion.
I'd be supportive of that.
Can we, can I reconfirm the dates on the calendar? We're talking about the 8th, 9th, and 10th?
Just talking about, talking about the 8th in particular, yeah.
We don't have regional sand scheduled that day.
Okay, so then we start, have a 2 o'clock board start. Because regionals, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking down at the 15th, yeah, so it would just be the 9th, 10th, have a 2 o'clock start for the...
First day only?
Yeah, first day only, yeah, and then allow for a night session. I'm sorry, I was reading the two boxes together here, so thank you for that. Okay. That was all I had on that item, so I just add that as, we hold on our calendar and...
So it'll be a 2:00 p.m. start date on June 8th?
Right.
Wednesday, June 8th.
And then actually, note for a 6 o'clock session, I guess, or an evening session, so we could, you know, appropriately, maybe even have a break, that way we allow ourselves a break if we're going to go into the evenings.
Yeah, I'll make sure it's noted that way.
Okay.
Everyone's okay with it?
Okay. Then item 8, just a quick comment.
Okay, give me one second. Item 8 is Approve a Property Tax Revenue Exchange Agreement with the City of Galt for the Annexation of the Galt Island area.
Okay, I just want to thank county executive Anne Edwards for following up with the city manager Lorenzo Hines, and City of Galt. We have a letter that was circulated today that clarifies the keeping of farm animals in the area that would be annexed in the future under this agreement to the, to the city, and I think it, I don't think, it does address the concerns relative to the ability to keep and maintain animals on properties that are currently in rural zoning. They're either AR-1, AR-2, AR-5 under the county zoning matrix, and would now go to municipal zoning under the city's auspices once the annexation were complete, but this addresses it. I want to make sure this was entered into the record in event there's any questions in the future, but thank both the city manager and our county executive for coordinating on this and getting further clarification from what we had last week, so I'm supportive of moving the item forward, and I want to thank our staff for their work in attaching this to the tax sharing agreement, so. And that's all I had on that. And then lastly, 19.
19, you did say that. Item 19 is the Contract for the Old Florantown Streetscape Improvement Phase 2 Final Contract Acceptance.
Yes, I just wanted to note, certainly, the leadership, certainly my two colleagues who immediately represent Florantown, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy, and I'm glad to see the project was completed. Did want to note here, though, that the number of change orders, and some of them, as I read through them, were kind of unpredictable, but to say the least, and they encountered them in the field, but it, I was a little bit concerned that at the intersection of Power Inn Road and Florant, Florant Road, that there maybe wasn't better, at least the calculations about some of the utilities and some of the potential conflicts that were out there. That's a major intersection, and a number of the change orders were due to things that were encountered either in the field or weren't anticipated in our plan on this, and we spent a lot of time and money in advancing this, and it's good for the community out there. And the amount of change orders was almost 7.5%. And I know on the previous project, for another unrelated reason, we had a major change order in, at the railroad over crossing there, it could be the railroad grade crossing. So I just wanted to call that out. It just seems to me that we spend a lot of time, we bill it out, it's done internally in a lot of cases, and I, when we're doing projects like this, older infrastructure, we're improving it, and both underground as well as at the surface, and I just would hope, because that chews up money that could otherwise maybe go to additional improvements that wouldn't actually be utilized in the, in the project development and/or in the project implementation, and so I wanted to call that out, because again, I know we watch these things, and we get notices of some change orders, but I guess, Steve, I would just say that when we're looking at these projects in older parts of our county business districts and so forth, we need to really pay attention, because otherwise, it chews up the money in the process, and so we chewed up a half a million dollars in change orders on this project alone.
Yes, understood Supervisor Natoli. On that project, we also had a reduction in the bid item variance, so that's, the total actually increase of the contract was a little over 5%. So yes, we do look at that. One of the things that we try and utilize is the non-destructive testing to-do evaluation of different things, and sometimes that doesn't take care of what's underground, and I think that was part of the issue with this project. Steve White is here in case you have any specific questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Steve. Well, maybe, Steve, you could just address that. I know you've been with this project for some time, and worked with my colleagues on some of the access to properties and so forth, and this change orders weren't nearly as great as the ones on the, on the prior phase, but I just, I noted that one intersection, seemed to me when we got Power Inn and Florant, we ought to have a better idea before we go into major construction, and then end up having a lot of change orders that affect that particular location, so.
Chair Frost, members of the board, Steve White, Department of Transportation. Supervisor Natoli, we absolutely understand the sensitivity, especially given some of the things that came in as change orders on the first phase. I think the biggest change order item we had on this was, was actually an AD or an $80,000 pavement related, and that's one we see, frankly, we need to do a better job of. We get out there a year ahead of a project, we evaluate the pavement, and then by the time we get out there, it's deteriorated even more. To your point at the intersection there, as you noted, it's, it is an older part of town. There were a few misses, I have to acknowledge that, but most, most of those change orders were just utilities that we did not know were out there until after they were USAID, and in some cases, the US, they weren't even USAID. That's, that's one that we really can't do anything about, but absolutely, here you, we want to minimize these change orders as much as possible.
Okay, I appreciate that, Steve. And just on a related note, and I mean, my colleagues have heard from others, but I know we went to a lot of, certainly, expense and planning to do the corner monuments, both at Power Inn, as well as at Florant Perkins, and I know I received communication last week regarding ongoing issues that relate to, I think, the, you know, misuse of the location at Florant Perkins in particular, I think that, you know, some of the damage to landscaping and the corner monuments, and I know they're being occupied by folks who are homeless, I guess, and so that presents another challenge, but I think it's really important. We spent, spent a lot of time and effort and certainly money, and we're still responsible for the maintenance at both of those locations with the windmills and the corner returns and some of the seating areas and landscaped areas, and so I, I trust we're continuing to work on those issues at both of those locations.
We are, and I know Lupe and Ron are in weekly meetings on homeless issues, and that particular location was actually a challenge to get this job built, because we had conflicts with unhoused folks at that location. We did get through it, but yeah, we are very, very aware of that and doing what we can to mitigate it.
And have we had significant vandalism? Are you, I mean, again, you can drive, one can drive by and see, you know, physical evidence of leased litter and other things, but are we continuing to track that so that as we work through the encampment team and so forth, that if we're, you know, finding high levels of vandalism or damage to public properties and so forth, I assume it enters into the equation when we're looking to try to address these issues?
It is, it's definitely part of the cost and something that needs to be, to be addressed.
Supervisor Natoli, if I could add, that's, those are the locations where we do are experiencing damage to the public property. We will go through the process with Bruce and his staff to relocate those folks, because that, that is one thing that we still are allowed to do, and county council can weigh in as well, but damage to the public property are the, the ones that we talk about in these weekly encampment meetings where we do take action.
Yeah, if I could just add, what kind of coordination is taking place, if any at all, with, with code, not just with the, the social services part of this, but working in conjunction with code to make sure that we don't let, if there's garbage that's building up or other, you know, behaviors that are impacting the aesthetic of those corners, what are we, what are we doing almost in real time with code to see that's addressed?
Well, code is on the encampment team weekly meetings. Since that's public property and it's, I maybe let county council kind of weigh in a little bit more, it's not, it's been as much code enforcement as it has been a lot of the other departments that are, that are part of the team. So it's, we've done cleanups in, in encampments where there isn't public property damage. We have been doing cleanup efforts to try and remove a lot of the trash, litter, debris.
When you say "we," is it transportation or is it code?
It's actually, I think, part of waste management and recycling. There's a contract through that department, but as Steve said, there's a coordinated effort between all departments to do that, and identifying which department will take the lead on certain parts of the way to address each encampment.
Well, since there seems to be at least a minimum of three departments involved, I would hope that it's not a case where we let the garbage build up too long because of, you know, confusion or assumption that the other is going to be responsible for cleaning up those corners.
I would just note that I heard from someone who is very supportive of certainly the community's efforts, but the county's efforts to make those improvements, that it doesn't pass by there on a regular basis if it came through, but was sorely disappointed, and I think a bit dismayed, to put it lightly, about the condition that they, you know, saw from, you know, obviously from their, you know, pass by in their car, and I just, I think it's important to protect those assets. I mean, again, you know, significant planning, public dollars went into it, we maintain them publicly, and, you know, granted to the, to the question that a colleague posed, and we know what we're challenged with in areas throughout the community, but those, you know, corner monuments and, you know, the historical attribution of the windmills and the seating and the landscaping and so forth, you know, need to be maintained, and we have, we have certainly the right to maintain them, and we need to, again, you know, certainly do our best to be sensitive to folks who are occupying those locations, but I would just call out, say they, they need constant attention, I would say that, and I don't know how much attention they get beyond calls from our respective offices or from the public, and I, I just think we need to be, be aware of it. A lot's been invested on the public side in, in the Florantown community, and we're seeing, you know, I think, a significant rebound, certainly with some of the private investment there, but, you know, those are gateways, they were, that's what we're designed to be that, and, and I don't know that they, you know, certainly portray what we like to portray as relates to, you know, good stewardship of, of the public properties, and so I guess I would just ask that we, you know, be cognizant of that and make sure that that stays on the list in addition to other locations that we're working, you know, diligently on to try to maintain the, not just the aesthetic, but certainly the public investment there, and there's significant public investment in the whole Florantown. This, this $5 million is probably in addition to another $5 million, I bet you we've invested $10 or $15 million over the years, and, you know, it needs to be protected, it needs to be maintained, and, and I would hope that we could do that in a way that certainly comports with, you know...
Absolutely. The world's changed a lot since those improvements went in, and I think even just the way we design those things, we need to be thinking about these things as we move forward, but it's, it's on the radar screen, and we're looking at it weekly.
Okay, great.
Supervisor Natoli, we'll continue to keep that on the encampment team's front burner to make sure we keep that cleaned up, and if there is damage, we'll move forward accordingly.
Right, and again, my colleagues, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Kennedy, represent respective ends of, of the Florantown Streetscape project, and I, I trust that they're getting some more feedback, so. All right, thanks. That's all I had.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment on, just real quickly. I just want to say that the encampment teams, already a game changer. I mean, I'm seeing some real significant results, and I appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I'd just like to have the record reflect that I'll be voting no on item 29.
29, thank you. Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just make a couple of comments on item 22.
Item 22 is the Contract for the Howe Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project, bids to be received on November 4th, and the environmental impact report is an envirom, I'm sorry, the environmental document is an environmental impact report.
Thank you, and I know Steve was up here, DOT, I just want to first, you know, thank you, DOT, for, for this project. I mean, I, this is exactly the kind of project we need more of in, in Arden Arcade. I noticed they were out there doing some work this morning, as I drove in, something was going on out there at that intersection, I'm not sure exactly what, but I know there's also been some additional money in, in the state budget, either, you know, CDBG, Green Means Go, Safe Routes to Schools, there's active transportation grant money, there's always, I think, more money being allocated towards these kinds of efforts, and I really will continue to keep encouraging you to, to think more, instead of doing things in a fragmented way, which at least is the appearance sometimes, to really put a focus on these neighborhoods, and see, even the small things where it's, it may not be a, a major problem, but even just patchwork sidewalks, the impact that has on pedestrian travel, and frankly, just the aesthetics in the neighborhood, is a big deal for the folks who live there, and, and having a patch of sidewalk that is concrete and then nothing, or concrete and then asphalt and concrete, I mean, that, sometimes that's the first connection someone has with their local government. So to the extent we could, could look at these things and make sure, just the aesthetics of these areas in terms of the sidewalks, the aesthetics and the safety are improved, especially in Arden Arcade and North Highlands, these, these aging, unincorporated communities, I certainly will appreciate those efforts and support those efforts, and hopefully we can get creative with some new, new funding that's available, so, thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. And we do have one public comment on item 3 by phone.
And I think this person has dropped off the line, and let me just double check. Okay, yep, item 3 dropped off the line, so we have no one in the queues for consent matters at this time.
Okay, with that, I call for a vote for consent.
I'll move the consent counter.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond.
I would second it, and noting the modification to the calendar on item 3.
And also a no vote on item 29 by Kennedy and Serna. And we have a second by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and that would be for items 1 through 40, with the exception of item 29, there's a no vote registered with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Serna. And we also have a revision on item 3 for the board calendar, and that was for the June 8th date, starting at 2:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and at this time, we will move to the next item, which is off-agenda public comments. We do have one off-agenda speaker who is in the audience, Patsy Nemitz. Hi, Patsy.
Hello.
These are some amazing pictures you provided.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm pretty nervous, and I will try to get through this in two minutes. My name's Patsy Nemitz, and I live in Wilton. Our property borders Dillard Ranch, a 97-acre historic dairy owned by SAC County Regional Parks. Dillard Ranch is currently being leased by a local cattle rancher, and I'm not privy to the details of the lease. The property is currently being flood-irrigated by an agricultural well with a 15-horsepower pump. The 15-horsepower pumps are capable of pumping 70 gallons of water per minute. The pump is located behind our neighbor's property, and they've told us that the pump runs almost continuously, and it does make me wonder, to start, who pays the smud bill? I did include a picture of the meter, if anybody wants to check and see who pays that bill, it's got to be massive. The equipment's in a state of disrepair, the irrigation technology is antiquated, which results in tremendous water waste. And the well and the pump are surrounded by ponded water. I included a map here, and you can see, along the south side of the Dillard Ranch, there's a drainage ditch, and that divides our property from the ranch. And the ditches that are shown in blue run in several directions, including along the west side of our property, and we've never experienced water in these ditches like we have this year. We've owned the property for 22 years. We even have water trying to turn and come back uphill toward the east, okay, toward the east across the front of our property, which has never happened. This is usually completely dry in the summer. And, you know, this, this is government-owned property, and it, in my mind, constitutes gross mismanagement of the resources on government-owned property at a time when the citizens are being asked to conserve. I do have two more pictures of ponded water. This is looking north at Dillard Road, and this is along Davis Road. We have one more. Okay, thank you. So on September 16th, I attended a workshop on water conservation hosted by the Kasumnas Water Forum. The purpose of the meeting was to explain the legislative requirement to manage groundwater and discuss methods for conservation. One of the ideas they plan to implement immediately is voluntary following of agricultural land. That was a light bulb for me. It seems obvious that SAC County Regional Parks should voluntarily follow the land at Dillard Ranch. the land at Dillard Ranch. The county budget would actually benefit from the Dillard Ranch property instead of being further burdened. The Water Management Agency will pay property owners for the voluntary following of the land. This is a side note, but at a meeting to discuss the development of the Dillard Ranch in July, Liz Bellis, the Director of Sack County Regional Parks, stated the project was "not intended to be budget neutral." That's a quote. So in other words, Dillard Ranch developed will always cost taxpayers, but it doesn't have to be that way. If citizen property owners are being asked not to use their agricultural land for the good of water conservation, government property owners should show good faith effort and go first. Government property owners should lead by example. Government property owners should do what's best for the taxpayers that fund them and the environment. In researching for this presentation, I was appalled to learn of the absurd shortfall in capital projects already slated by Sack County Regional Parks, $72 million that they don't have. How can a government agency consider funding new projects when they can't fund the projects to which they've already committed? And the track record of Sack County Regional Parks is abysmal when you consider the homeless debacle at the American River Parkway and their mismanaged finances. I have little faith that Sack County will act in a way that benefits the environment, taxpayers, and my community. Please prove me wrong. I implore you to do what you can to ensure responsible decisions are made with regard to the Dillard Ranch property and the management of water resources in the Kasumnas Sub Basin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Supervisor Nutoli does.
I don't have a question. Thank you, Patty, for being here this morning. I too attended the meeting via Zoom, the parks meeting, so the one you referenced, and very familiar with the, as my colleagues are, with the backlog on parks. It's not due to mismanagement. We haven't had a capital improvement budget for many years as relates to county parks. And the backlog is in deferred maintenance, so I wouldn't, I would not presume that that's mismanagement. I get your point about the water usage. As you're well aware, having been a neighbor there for many years, the ranch fell into disrepair for several years. And the idea with the lease was to have a working ranch, and certainly to have revenues that would offset at least some of the, the normal maintenance costs. As relates to the water usage, I think your pictures certainly, you know, speak to that. And I will follow up today with Liz Bellis with parks. Obviously, we oversee the lease, and if there's, and I know we had concern earlier in the year from some of the neighbors when there was some work being done on some of the, the areas where the, the water is ponded, and I think there were spills that, that, you know, had some large amounts of water. At least that was reported.
It's been all summer.
But I get your picture, all summer long.
Yes.
So the tailwater, again, oftentimes is, you know, recovered if they, if it's, you know, if it was properly constructed.
It is not.
No, I, I get your picture. I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm having a conversation.
It can be, yes.
Yeah, yeah, right. And that, and that's your point. So that's, we, we need to take a look at the, and I assume that the, the party who is, again, a local rancher, if given, you know, the arrangement with the county, if we can, you know, figure out, capture the water and then reuse it on-site. The issue about following, obviously, we're not telling folks in Wilton or anywhere else that they can't farm their ground, and whether it's government property or privately owned. But I think conservation is certainly a, you know, a point where, you know, we're going to continue to look at it as we're, and we're in the drought. So I guess I would just offer that we'll follow up with the Parks Department immediately.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, and you don't need to put it on the record, but if we have a phone number, we can follow up with you as well, so.
Sure, I don't mind, I mean.
Yeah, well, you don't need to put it over the, over the airwaves. Give it to the clerk, and I was just gonna say.
Okay, I'll do that.
And anything else you wanted to add. I just wanted to say, I, you know, your point's well made.
Okay. I want, I want you to understand, I'm absolutely pro agriculture, and I'm not blaming the rancher at all. The equipment itself is not, is not in any working order. He's doing what he can with what's there.
Right.
Which is owned by the government and supported by my tax dollars.
It, it is.
And, you know, the, the water thing is obviously legislatively necessary now, you know. It's, there's no, there is no choice. We're all gonna have to make changes, and I think it should start with government property. That's just my point.
We should be in a leadership role, there's no doubt about that. So, okay, yeah. So if you'll just give your phone number, we'll follow up. I know you give your, your email number to the clerk on this, but if you could give the, the phone number, we'll follow up.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
And, again, we'll see what we can do to get this corrected, so.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Patty.
You want me to take these? Do I take these stuff?
I'll take those, you can leave them right there, and I'll grab them.
Leave them, okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nutoli, we'll, we'll take a look at this and see if there's a equipment damage that may be causing it to leak and then continue the pump running. So we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
That's the first I've seen of this, of this concern.
I know. We had called to the office earlier in the summer when there was a, a large spill of water. There was actually some work being done on the ranch. But I, I would just say, I know we did allocate some, and for, for Patsy's benefit, we did allocate money to our ranch properties through the general fund. And so if there's upgrade to the equipment, which is still retained on the ranch, that, or improvements to be made relative to the, you know, the, the tail ponds for the tailwater and how they're collected and so forth, so we can make best use of the water and assist certainly the rancher, who has a lease, but the rancher's not responsible for the entirety of the property either. It was owned by the county, and Patsy makes the point very, very correctly on that. So, Steve, we can follow up with, certainly with, with Liz. And again, if we need to make some improvements and work with our, our, our leaseholder, the rancher, who again is a Wilton resident, and we'll see what we can do to get this corrected. So, because again, the neighbors are seeing, you know, obviously what they believe to be a, a waste of water, and it's impacting them and other property owners, so.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll look into it and report back. And we do appreciate in this current budget that there was money approved to deal with ranches.
Yeah, and we may have to redirect how we're gonna use that. We may have other, but I think this is, you know, certainly a great sensitivity to water, usage, water waste, and water conservation. So I think it's, you know, the points are well made. Thanks, Patsy, for being here.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you Supervisor Nutoli. Okay, on to our morning-timed matters, and I'll ask the clerk if you'll read the next item, please.
Okay, and I'm gonna close the off-agenda phone comments. I left those open, just in case.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 41, this is the Poly Avenue Boundary Line Adjustment. A Boundary Line Adjustment to move a property line between a .16 acre residential five-zone parcel and a .91 acre residential four-zone parcel located at 9055 Poly Avenue and 5921 Filbert Avenue in the Orangeville community, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Good morning, Mr. Puhuli.
Good morning, Chair Frost. Board members, Chris Puhuli, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. And I'm here to provide the staff presentation for this item. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you. The two subject parcels are 9055 Poly Avenue and 5921 Filbert Avenue, located just south of Greenback Lane in Orangeville. The two properties are outlined in red on the slide. The property owner of 9055 Poly Avenue is seeking to purchase a tenth of an acre from the owner of 5921 Filbert Avenue to expand their backyard for personal use. In order to complete this transaction, a Boundary Line Adjustment is required. However, as the properties have different zoning designations, a board hearing is required to consider the request. Title 22 of County Code outlines the procedures for Boundary Line Adjustments and authorizes the Planning Director or their designee to consider these requests. However, the Zoning Code states that no zoning district shall be established to divide one lot into two or more zoning districts unless approved by the board. Therefore, the request before the board is the authorization to create a split-zoned property at 9055 Poly Avenue. This slide shows the zoning of the properties. The larger property on Filbert Avenue, which is .93 acres, is zoned RD4, and the Poly Avenue property, which is currently .16 acres, is zoned RD5. The properties surrounding the subject parcels are zoned both RD4 and RD5, with the properties north of Filbert being zoned RD4, and the properties on Poly Avenue and south being zoned RD5. This exhibit shows the proposed Boundary Line Adjustment that would be made if the board approves the creation of the split-zone parcel. The resultant parcel on Filbert Avenue would be reduced to .83 acres, and the resultant parcel on Poly Avenue would be .26 acres, and would measure roughly 60 by 180, which is similar to properties immediately west of the subject parcel. Planning and surveys staff have evaluated the proposed request and concluded that it is consistent with the Subdivision Map Act, General Plan, and Zoning Code, subject to board approval. Staff also concluded the proposed lot configuration is largely consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and lot patterns to the west of the Poly Avenue site. As the use and development standards between RD4 and RD5 are largely the same, the resulting split zone will have a negligible impact in regards to future development on the subject site. Finally, staff has concluded that the board can make the applicable findings to approve the request. Staff is recommending the board recognize the exempt status of the request under Sequel Guidelines. Approve the resolution authorizing a split-zoned property pursuant to Zoning Code Section 1.6.2.2.2. I did want to call that out because the attached resolution incorrectly cites the Zoning Code Section addressing split zoning as .1, when in fact, the correct citation is .2. Lastly, direct the Planning Director or designee to process the Boundary Line Adjustment pursuant to Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions that board members have. And I should also point out that the owner of the Poly Avenue property and their engineer are on the phone line. Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, I'll ask the owner if they would like to make any comments at this time?
No, let me, I don't have any comments so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we, we do not have any board members in the queue to speak, and I wonder if we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay. This is a seemingly non-controversial issue. I have not had one letter or call regarding this, and so since it's in my district, I'm gonna go ahead and move staff's recommendation. And I have a second from Supervisor Desmond. And please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you to the owner for being on the phone. That completes, completes item 41.
Okay. For item 42, this is the Retroactive Authority to amend the agreement with Deloitte in Tush through February 28, 2022, and increase the maximum value by $550,000 for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,165,000 for assistance in planning, tracking, and reporting the use of federal American Rescue Plan funds cost.
Good morning, Chair Frost.
Good morning, Amanda.
Members of the board, I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's Chief Fiscal Officer, and I'm here this morning to provide more information about our recommendation to amend the agreement with Deloitte for continued assistance in planning, tracking, and reporting the use of federal American Rescue Plan funds. Damon Armini, Senior Manager with Deloitte, is also available on the line to address any questions you may have. As you know, on September 28th, we recommended an amendment to extend the agreement with Deloitte through February 28th, 2022, and to increase the maximum value by $550,000 for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,165,000. And that item was continued to today's meeting. I wanted to start off by saying that we understand the concerns raised at the last meeting and want to share more detail about the work Deloitte has completed to date. Some of this work, such as the Community Needs Survey, was more visible. And while the input received from the community through the survey, as well as the analysis conducted by Deloitte was essential to developing funding priorities, and in many cases affirmed our understanding of what issues are important to our community, we understand the limitations of how the survey was conducted and are already planning to approach this kind of work more differently in the future. Much of the work completed by Deloitte has been far less visible, coming mainly in the form of professional technical assistance, and in some cases was really laying the groundwork for future stages of the county's implementation of this funding. These services have included developing, conducting, and analyzing a department survey that generated over 150 potential projects, including Deloitte holding office hours with departments to explain eligibility considerations specific to the state and local fiscal recovery fund. Additionally, Deloitte has developed and is continuously updating an online tool that provides an inventory of all ARPA funding opportunities and associated eligibility considerations that will allow the county to check for alternate funding sources when considering projects to fund. Deloitte has been assisting us in designing an internal structure and processes to oversee the ongoing administration of ARPA activities, including developing templates for tracking project execution activities, as well as to capture all required data for monitoring and reporting requirements. Not only is ARPA an entirely new program, but centralized grants management is a new process for the county, and we've needed help planning how to set this up to ensure future success. And most critically, Deloitte has been providing ongoing technical knowledge of ARPA policy updates and funding requirements, as well as insight into how other counties are approaching their ARPA funding. This work has been especially important, given the rapidly evolving nature of the guidance, including Treasury's Interim Final Rule, which was issued on May 10th, and was 134 pages with, with 42 pages of additional guidance in the form of frequently asked questions, which was updated six times over the following months. Following the Interim Final Rule, Treasury issued a separate compliance and reporting guidance document, which was 35 pages of additional guidance, published on June 24th. Over 1,000 unique comments on the Interim Final Rule were submitted to Treasury, who continues to review comments in an effort to issue a final rule. And additionally, guidance for other ARPA funding streams continues to be issued, and other legislation, most notably the infrastructure bill, continues to evolve. The original contract with, with Deloitte was entered into before any of this guidance was issued, and the rules and considerations surrounding use of this money are simply much more complex than we anticipated. In thinking about the value added by consultants in a process like this, assistance in identifying and maximizing other funding sources is certainly a key component, but it is equally important to utilize outside expertise and federal funding in order to minimize the risk of non-compliance, and ensure that this funding is implemented in a way that is effective and has the greatest overall impact. Deloitte can provide expertise and assistance that will be able to help the county do that. Going forward, we anticipate that a combination of internal and external resources will be required in order to effectively implement this funding. We are adapting and adjusting our use of resources based on our experience to date, and it will be important to maintain flexibility to continue to adapt as the project's needs evolve, based on additional guidance and program and project scoping. We plan to build internal staff resources, and we'll have an initial recommendation for limited-term positions for the board to consider on October 19th. Depending on the number and complexity of projects, additional staff resources beyond this may be needed in the future. The recommended amendment to Deloitte's contract before you today is intentionally structured to be able to target Deloitte's assistance where it will be of most value to the county, providing expertise that the county does not have internally. By authorizing work under task orders for specific scope and budget, we can ensure that contract dollars are used efficiently and in a way that is responsive to what the current needs are. In the near term, that will likely focus most heavily on project scoping, including assistance identifying and aligning projects to priority funding areas and the expenditure categories defined by Treasury, identifying other potential funding sources for projects before the county's ARPA allocation is used, and advising on eligibility, performance measures, use of evidence-based programs, and procurement and contracting requirements. As projects begin to be implemented, future tasks may include advising on subrecipient agreements and developing training for subrecipients, including terms that need to be included in agreements, and ensuring subrecipients understand their obligations, developing processes for subrecipient monitoring to ensure this is done consistently, and to provide assistance for departments that may not have experience with this process, and providing technical assistance on required reporting to Treasury as this reporting becomes more complex with projects being implemented. In addition to Deloitte, other external resources may be leveraged or engaged as needed, including the county's federal lobbyist, a professional polling firm for future surveys or other outreach in advance of the county receiving the second tranche of funding, grants management software to support centralized grants administration, and a potential RFP for longer-term consulting services to assist with monitoring and reporting requirements going forward, as these funds continue to be spent through potentially 2026, should we determine the need for outside expertise in this area. Finally, a question was raised at the last meeting about 71J. When the init- When the initial contract was executed, it was determined that Charter Section 71J was not applicable because the services contemplated by the contract are not services which are or have been provided by county employees. Furthermore, county council has determined that the services provided pursuant to this agreement are special services as defined by California Government Code. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors is permitted to contract for the services without going through the 71J process. With that, our recommendation is to approve the resolution retroactively authorizing the county executive to sign an amendment to the agreement with Deloitte, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amanda. Supervisor Natoli.
Thanks, Amanda, and thank you for taking the time certainly to go through, I think, you know, the intent of what's before us, but also, I think, some of the complexity that we may be confronted with. I wanted, a couple of questions, I want, one of your last points, though, was relative to a potential future external assistance in monitoring and overseeing, you know, responses to Treasury. We receive a lot of money in this county from a variety of sources, a myriad of sources, I would say, and have developed expertise certainly over the decades that relates to, obviously, our comporting and complying with, you know, the variety of strings that come attached for dollars, and whether it be in social services, or on infrastructure projects, or any, any number of areas where either we receive grant monies, or in monies that we are, didn't give them discretion to make decisions around. Is it your professional opinion that we're actually going to need additional assistance in order to maintain the compliance? I'm not talking about Deloitte here, I mean, you're kind of, you were looking to the future. It seems that we have the capacity, you may have to have additional staff to do that. I get that piece of it, but I'm a little puzzled, because it seems to me that, you know, we're pretty darn good about, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and, you know, and we do it with mental health monies, and a lot of other things, that where the regulations, they change on us, and/or the auditors come in a year or two later and say, "Well, you should have done it this way," and, and you didn't, so, we, you know, we have to allow for that, but, so I guess I'm just curious. It seemed to me that if the assistance is offered here allows us to structure in a way that gives us a good foundation to work from, that we ought to be fully capable of either with, you know, current staff or additional staff, but certainly with building the parameters by which we would make sure that we, again, are held accountable, but also do a good accounting for the dollars that are going to be put to use here in our community. So, I just, I'm curious about that point.
Yes, thank you. So, I think that that is something that we will evaluate, so I didn't, didn't mean to indicate that that was something we were absolutely planning on, meant to indicate that it was, it was potential. I think you're right, absolutely, we would use our internal resources first, and there may not be a need for external resources in that case. However, I do want to make sure everyone understands that, that there's a lot of specific reporting and monitoring and evidence and outcome requirements associated with ARPA, which, you know, some of which may be, may be included in other programs that we have experience with, but this is a new program, and there may be things associated with it, complexities, that would require us to seek some external expertise in, in that area. We, we simply don't know yet whether or not that would be needed across all of, you know, the departments that may be using this funding.
Okay. The question I was initially going to ask you, and it kind of goes to, I think, some of the sensitivity around this, and certainly, I think, the need to continue to push forward here in, you know, in an efficient manner, but also recognizing the clock continues to tick, and we've got to develop a process, and one that where, again, we have the full accountability, but to actually begin to put these dollars to use in meaningful ways, and again, working with, obviously, board and community priorities on, on the use of these funds. And, you know, 2026 may sound like a long ways off, but when you look at, you know, the amount of money that's, you know, one has come to this county, but that we project will become, and 300 million plus the ability to draw down, I just think that every day, you know, becomes more critical as time passes. But I wanted to ask about the task order, because again, that was pointed out in the previous staff report, you elaborated further on that. Is that something that, and maybe this is for Ann as well, that in light of, obviously, some of the conversation we've had on this, and I think the importance of, that you've stressed, this was stressed in the report, has been stressed at a couple of different times by county executive, as we talked about, ARPA funding, of the need to, you know, look at the expenditure dollars, but also where we can draw other dollars down. And so, with other categories, and again, that's one of the things that, you know, I think is very important here, that, to my point last week, this value added, that if in fact, you know, we are able to look at other funding streams, that may not be part of this tranche of 150 million or 300 million that we only hope to receive, then, you know, that's important, but if those are, I assume those may be part of the task orders that we would look at, say that in the realm of housing, or in broadband, or infrastructure, or, you know, critical health, whatever it might be, that there are other dollars available, either through ARPA, or, you know, again, where we can, you know, further either bring dollars and/or resources to this community on an ongoing basis, and/or certainly as a part of, you know, the, the work that we're going to do with, with these dollars. And so, I guess my, my question is, is that if we authorize this today, is there a way to keep this board informed about, you know, the task orders, not necessarily all the detail of that, but so we know, because, again, that was part of the conversation, was the counting for the first, you know, $600,000, and, you know, here's the hours, we saw the chart, you know, he certainly provided it to us, but it didn't get to the level of detail that you shared today, so I think it would be important, obviously, there's, you know, community interest, but I think board interest on this, that we could be kept apprised of that, and, and I think the calculation, again, my, my term here, but where that value is added to what we're doing, either it assists staff in areas we don't have current expertise, or where we're going to rely on them to develop, you know, either programmatic chart, or some process, and, and assist us with reporting requirements and so forth, but if there are areas where they, you know, they have expertise and are able to push, you know, back into the process, say, "Hey, you're eligible for X amount of dollars over here, and you can, you know, multiply what you already have in place and still help accomplish these projects," that, to me, is really important, because that's the, that's the piece that brings additional resources and helps us do more good work in this community. So, I guess my, my question is, is there a way to keep this board informed of, kind of, you know, of the task orders? This was going to be a six-month contract, it sounds like it might go beyond that, I don't know, I mean, obviously, there's a limitation on the dollars, and so, my question is, is, how, or how are we going to be kept informed of that, I guess, and, and, and share that with others who have an interest, obviously, in how we expend these dollars?
So, I can, I can take a stab at it. So, I mean, I think absolutely, we can provide regular reporting that will let you know, you know, what scope has been authorized under task orders, and what the value is to the county associated with that, that scope, you know, what the anticipated value is, and then what the actual value has been in terms of work performed. I agree with you, I mean, I think, I think a key component here is being able to identify other funding sources and not spend this money on things that could be funded elsewhere. I think also, though, you know, there is value in ensuring that we're, we're setting things up in a way that's compliant, right, that we're not exposing ourselves to audit risk and having disallowed costs. There's value in making sure that, you know, we are implementing things effectively, and in fact, that perhaps we're, we are, we are scoping projects in such a way that we are, we're able to do more with this money than we otherwise would have been able to if we didn't have that expertise. So, I think that there are different ways that we will see the value, and I just wanted to be clear about, you know, sort of communicating how that would be demonstrated.
Okay, I appreciate that. I guess lastly, I would just say that, you know, we had this conversation a year ago this time with, with the CARES money, and we saw other jurisdictions, you know, utilizing the money in ways that, you know, at least the questions were raised, and we had it actually, you know, discussing these chambers about, "Well, they used it for that, and they used it for that, and, you know, we're, we did what we did to, you know, free up dollars in the general fund," but certainly, you know, came under a lot of criticism for the way we did that, but in order to comport with Treasury. And so, I, my point being here, that if there are those issues that arise, this came to us, you'll give us early heads up if there was any consideration, because again, you know, part of the, the arguments presented to this board was, "This keeps us in line with what's, you know, what's allowed under the CARES Act, that's why we had to do it this way." I can tell you that, just by recollection, that others did other things that at least were said in these chambers, "Well, that, they're not allowed to do that," so that's, that's on them, and they'll have to, you know, I guess, if Treasury comes back and wants to hold them accountable for their expenditure, then that's really not our business, but I just want to be clear that if we get in any situation, and we might be confronted with that, that you give us, you know, early heads up, and I trust you will, but I just, I wanted to point that out, because that certainly left a little bit of impression on me after we went through all that, and, you know, I haven't seen any, you know, again, those audits sometimes come one or two years later, but again, we're being very precise about this, we're spending the dollars to set this up, but if we see that we're headed in a, in a direction that's going to present some sort of challenge, then you let us know that, so. Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda, for the, for the detail, and for hearing those of us that expressed concern about this at the last, last meeting. You know, I continue to believe that this is extraordinarily expensive. I understand and respect the staff perspective that there's value to it. I don't, I'm not arguing that there's not value to it, I guess it's really just a matter of the order of magnitude here that perhaps we disagree. I mean, having been a paid consultant, not necessarily in this capacity in the past, this just seems like an extraordinary amount of money right out of the chute for, again, I think, in some measure, telling us kind of what we, what we already can assume or know, and so, I won't be, I won't be supporting it, but I just want to make sure that you understand that it's not because, I think it's poor judgment on, on anyone's part, I just happen to have a great deal of confidence in the people that we have, and the fact, as Supervisor Natoli pointed out, that I believe that we, you know, we do have the opportunity to, to hire staff if necessary to, to perform the work. And I would just add with a question, do we know whether or not other jurisdictions of our size, kind of our typical surrogates, whether it be Alameda County or others, are they spending millions on consultants right away to help them in the same, same way?
Yeah, I don't know specifically what other, what other counties are spending. I do know that, you know, that there are other counties that have engaged consultants to do this work, and that it is explicitly called out and allowable in the Treasury guidance. I think they anticipate that, you know, jurisdictions would need and should use external expertise to guide them in this process, but I don't, I don't know how much other jurisdictions are spending.
Yeah, that, you know, that, that's something that we do on occasion, is kind of try and compare ourselves, just to understand whether or not, you know, we're commensurate, but, you know, I would, I would hazard a guess, especially for, for those jurisdictions that are probably smaller than us, that they're probably more likely to handle this internally or to staff up, but without that, I can only offer conjecture. So, again, I appreciate the, the work, I would, I would have you think of it more as a compliment, quite frankly, because I have the faith and confidence in, you know, the smart people, the folks that I think, whether it be in county council's office or your office, that I think could do the work, and certainly in connection with the five of us, whoever I think are thumb on the pulse of what's needed, as I've said multiple times, I think we can do it at a much lower cost. So, again, with all due respect, I will not be supporting that item.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Amanda, for the additional information, and I, you know, I want to piggyback on a few things from my colleagues, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Natoli. I, I too am very curious about what other jurisdictions are doing, and I don't think that's, that's necessarily, you know, dispositive about what we should be doing here in Sacramento County, but I think it's, it's important to know, have similar-sized jurisdictions, cities or counties, been, seen the need to spend this kind of money. I think this may have come up, the first approval for the, for the contract initially, we may have had a little bit about this discussion, but that was also going to be my question, do you even know, just anecdotally, if any other counties or cities are spending money on this kind of order of magnitude that we are, and it sounds like you really...
Well, I don't know how much they're spending. I do know that other counties and cities are using these types of services, I just couldn't give you dollar amounts.
Okay, and for the ones who aren't, I mean, is there something you see in Sacramento County that require, you know, that, where we have a greater need for these kinds of services, maybe where other counties of similar size don't? Are you aware of that, or have you had that discussion, or have thought about that at all?
The only thing that I can offer is that, that I know what has been a challenge for us, at least initially in thinking about this, is that there, there has not historically been centralized grants management in the county, so we do, you know, we manage many, many grants and lots of funding, but typically within departments. So, one of the challenges for us is because this is really an overall county-wide program, is how do we set up processes and structures to, you know, to ensure that we are, we're consistently collecting all of the required information and, and reporting that in ways that will be required. So, that's been, you know, that's been a challenge for us that other organizations may not have. Beyond that, no, and, and, you know, I, I agree with all of the comments that have been made, that we have very capable staff who can do much of this work, but I think that there is, there's value in having expertise from an organization that has worked, and, you know, other funding programs in other jurisdictions, and can help bring some of those ideas to us.
And, and I agree with that, and I appreciate your comment about maybe a structural difference, we don't have a centralized grant management. I mean, that's, that's very important to know. I just hear a lot from my constituents that, you know, this is a $1.2 million, that's not going to be going into the community, right? I mean, it's, and our other, our other counties seeing the need to do the same thing, you know, and those are very fair questions. I think, getting back to the value and, and your discussion with Supervisor Natoli, I think that's something that I really need to see, I really need to see that, hey, this, this Deloitte and Touche, the value of this really came back to us tenfold, because it allowed us to get the money out in the community quicker, it, it allowed us to, to leverage maybe additional funding sources we, we otherwise may not have been able to leverage. That's really what I'm going to be looking for as I consider, you know, supporting this matter today, because it is, it is really challenging. I struggle with this, and I, and I appreciate your work, and appreciate Deloitte's work, but I am, I'm really struck with the, the question, you know, why didn't we think about some of these things the first time when we first entered into the contract, right? Why didn't we anticipate some of these additional, you know, challenges and needs we may have had, so? Thank you very much, those are my comments and concerns.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I want to go back to the attachment on the contract amendment, if I could, Amanda. Couple of things, and certainly keeping what you verbally explained this morning, I guess, page three, and I, maybe this language, some of this is, some of this is carryover, I see there were amendments, but, and I know you try to generally cover things with bullet points and callouts, but I want to ask you, under the header, strategize and plan, first bullet, it says, assist accounting, articulating recovery vision, mission, goals, and strategy, including identifying and prioritizing investment areas and preparing a plan that targets available funding to meet priority needs. That's the work, I believe, that Ann and others, whether your departmental folks, are tasked with. What else are we going to have Deloitte help us with on that? You're going to be back to us in two weeks. That's a, that, that, to me, is a very important staff role. I mean, they may give you guidance, as you've said, about the, you know, fiscal alignment and so forth, but, and that's, and that's something you're going to engage with this board and the community in our conversations as we look at those areas, so are, do you anticipate there's more work that's going to occur in that area? Because again, that to me, you know, is, whatever they've done is kind of past tense in that regard, we're now, what you're going to bring forward is, with this discussion, and that's, you know, staff and community-driven, so I guess I'm curious under that bullet, is, is the work probably complete?
So, thank you for asking that question, as you're right, I mean, I think this was really sort of meant to be kind of a catch-all in terms of scope, and that, that particular bullet was actually a holdover from the original contract, and that's, that's how it was written in the original contract, so I think that they did assist us with some of that work initially, but yes, you're right, that's largely complete.
So, task completed, so we're, okay. And if I could, just in that same vein, then, and thank you for your response, going down to, to bullet five. and thank you for your response, going down to, one, two, three, to bullet five, again, now here we say educate and present to the Board of Supervisors on updated legislation, regulations, policies, and rules, as well as provide guidance, advisory services, and project management. Now, they may provide some advice, but, you know, again, I see that very appropriately, is whether you from the fiscal standpoint and from the policy, you know, recommendations and so forth, you know, and again, we all can, you know, benefit by further information that helps educate us certainly in our decision-making role. But again, updated legislation and so forth, it sounds to me like, you know, obviously legislation's been approved, there are administrative rules that, as you said, have been addressed six different times, and they may keep you apprised of that. So is this another task that in essence has been completed? And maybe not the project manager, we haven't gotten to that. But again, they're going to help us develop potentially a process for that. So curious about your response on, on that bullet.
So I think in part, yes, this is also probably language that's, that's coming from, you know, the, the original contract. I would also, you know, just, just make sure that we're clear that what's listed here, these are potential services, right? Everything's going to be issued under task orders. So to the extent we think we don't need the services that are listed here, we're not going to authorize work for those services. I mean, it could be that, you know, when the infrastructure bill passes, we think that really changes things, and we want them to come provide some, some information about that, and we might authorize some work associated with that. So, you know, potentially fall under this bullet point, but at this point, we're not anticipating that.
Okay. And then kind of in reverse, where I'd like to actually see the work product, I'll, I'll take you back up to the second bullet, which says design and support a recovery funding portfolio with multiple funding streams with a focus on strategic planning to avoid potential duplication of benefits and to help enhance transparency. So is there a document that's either in draft, in print, in the works, that will actually represent the funding portfolio that will be either amended or adjusted as board makes certain decisions, or that, you know, and Ann bringing to us this conversation we're going to have in a couple of weeks, plus follow-on? What is, what does that portfolio look like? Is it just in people's minds, or is there actually something in, in paper that will be of substance that we can share with people that will help guide us as we work through this and, and certainly inform the community as to what our overall approach, beyond any staff report we'd see at a future board meeting?
So, I mean, so certainly ultimately the objective is that we have a plan, right? For how, how this money is going to be spent and how other funding might, you know, augment and supplement that. It is a work in progress. So, you know, we'll be coming next with recommended allocations to, to priority areas. Ultimately, those are going to result in programs with projects underneath them. So all of that is part of this plan, you know, which ultimately will be completed. But I don't want to give the impression that it's all going to be done and, you know, in one shot. I think it's going to develop as, as we identify and scope out the, the programs and projects.
So the portfolio is going to be, for lack of a better description, an evolving document that will have obviously decision points with it, but there'll be an assimilation of this information, you know, and one won't, won't have to necessarily go back to discussion we had last spring, or discussion we're having today in order to, in some complete format to have an understanding about not only decisions that are made and direction, but also what is encompassed, because it talks, you know, if you go back to the first bullet where that work may be done, we, vision, mission, goals, and, and strategy. So I assume that's going to be, you know, a primary foundational point in any portfolio, that this was what was...
Yes. So I mean, I think that, to your point, we would, we would be reporting and showing things on a cumulative basis, so you understand sort of the history of where things are to date. Yeah.
Okay. Again, because if we're looking at a five-year, you know, roll, you know, rollout and implementation of expenditure of, you know, hundreds of mil-, you know, millions of dollars, then I think it'll be important to track that. But then to always have a reference point of a portfolio and then ever how it's evolved with supplemental information. All right. Very good. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. Additional question? You know, and this may have come up a little bit in the, in the meeting last week. What is the contingency plan if the board doesn't support this? In terms of, you know, what impact does it, will it have immediately on, on our timeline, our processes, staffing, other programs? Could you, you know, I'm sure you have, you know, if the board doesn't support this, what's, what's our plan B? Can you tell me what that would look like, Amanda?
Sure. So, you know, I think that, first of all, you know, this is, this is what we think the best path forward is, and that's what we're planning and hoping for, but understanding that it's, it's a board decision. I think it, it likely would have an impact on timing. You know, it will, it will take us some time to simply have the, the staff resources available to work on this, let alone ensure that they are sort of trained up and/or are, may already have, you know, expertise to do this work. I think it's worth keeping in mind that while we are adding staff, and that is important, you know, every city and county in the country is, is, is trying to figure out how to spend this money right now. And, and people with that kind of expertise are going to be in pretty high demand. So I think we need to be realistic about how long it might take for, you know, for folks to, to get trained up. So I think time is, is a consideration. I also, you know, I think that, that there will be an impact, hard to quantify, but an impact to, to our risk exposure. You know, there are maybe things that, that get missed because we don't have the, you know, the, the access to expertise. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that is a foregone conclusion. Again, I, I know we have capable staff resources. I am, you know, I'm, I'm confident that we will do good work, but there may think, may be things that get missed that wouldn't otherwise get missed. I think also, you know, we, we may just not be aware of all of the opportunities that could potentially be available, both in terms of outside funding and in terms of, you know, how we might best use, I mean, outside, outside of state and local fiscal recovery, so ARPA, but other funding streams, in terms of how we might best use the state and local fiscal recovery funds. So it's not so much a contingency plan so much as, you know, understanding what the impacts might be. Obviously, if we're, if we make the decision to not engage additional outside resources, that means that we are, we are doing this work internally, which I think, you know, comes with some of those potential risks. And I think would take longer to implement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. I just want to make a couple of comments. I, I felt concerned about the amount of money that we're spending. I, I feel like in the, in view of the fact that we had a new budget manager, a new county executive in the middle of a hurricane, it seemed like the right thing to get outside consultation on how to spend a huge amount of one-time money. And it underscores the catastrophic impact of COVID and the, and this money isn't free. I mean, it's, it's money that's one-time money, and we have to figure out how to spend it smartly. And so your comments really resonate with me on timing, risk, and missed opportunities versus opportunities we can capture at the right time, and how we manage forward. I do have one question regarding, you said, you, you made it sound like we might need, you know, a whole, a lot of employees or, you know, set up, we have to set up new systems, put new systems in place to manage this over time. Are these part, are these, are, are we going to try and use unused positions that are already available in our budget? Or are we adding positions? And are these part-time? Or will these become full-time civil servants that in six years, when we have spent the money and it's gone and we're on to our next challenge, what is the, how will we approach this staffing for, for this?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. So, so our recommendation will be to add limited-term positions. So we recognize that this is a, this is a program with a limited duration, and so that the staffing would be limited term.
Okay. And is this the last, I mean, this will complete what we need from, from these consultants?
Yes. So this would be the, the last scope extension? Under this, under this agreement. Yes.
Okay. Thank you Amanda. I'm going to ask now if we have any public comment on this item. I don't have any up here.
We do not have any public comments in queue.
Okay. And I do not have any further comments from board members, and so I'll entertain a motion.
I move staff recommendation. I think with the response here, and I guess I would incorporate into the motion that with regards to the task orders, not to give additional workload to Amanda or folks, but I think that through either her office or through the county exec, that we'd be kept apprised of, of, you know, task orders under this particular contract extension. And I think to the point highlighted by Supervisor Desmond that there'd be some tracking, you know, we won't have immediate evidence of it, but that as it relates to the value added, that where the assistance via this contract and/or our staff initiative, that we're able to identify dollars that will maximize use of these dollars, recognizing we're, you know, we're going to authorize the expenditure of a million point one of dollars to get this front loaded. But I think that'll be important over time, that with categories that may affect public health, infrastructure, whatever it may be, economic recovery, that we, or broadband, that we track that. And so we can actually see and/or not, but see that there's, you know, ready evidence that the, the investment in these consulting services actually makes a difference to the degree not only that it helps staff organize and allow us to account properly, but also hopefully brings in the additional knowledge that allows us to draw on additional dollars. So I would add those as my motion and, and move the staff recommendation.
I'll, I'll second with those additional comments and...
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion from Supervisor Natoli, a second from Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna voting no.
All right. And that brings us to the end of our morning session. We do have a closed session item. And we will recess to the seventh floor and return at 2:00 PM. Welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is October 5, and we're just beginning our afternoon session. It's 2:00 PM. Pardon me?
It's great.
I believe we're, we'll start, we'll be starting with item 43, which is our tobacco securitization board, and this is our sixth member, probably. which is our tobacco securitization board, and this is our sixth member probably.